Yes, sir, we are.
Okay.
I want to welcome everybody. This is a meeting of the Passaic County Board of County Commissioners, January twenty fifth, two thousand twenty-two. A roll call, please, Lou.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Here.
Best.
Here.
Duffy. Gallo.
Here.
Lapore.
Here.
Lazara.
Here.
James.
Here.
Director for the record, County Commissioner Duffy is excused for tonight.
All right, I want to read you.
Actually, he's here.
Here? All right. Get them up here.
We'll get you on later. Actually Duffy did arrive. He'll join us when we get him in.
The Open Public Meetings Act, read it, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law has been satisfied with respect to this being specifying the time, date, and location, including the annual notice adopted the reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk, posted in the administration building, mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
You want to stand for the invocation and after that the Pledge of Allegiance?
Oh God, who provides for thy people by thy power and rules over them in love, be gracious enough to bless thy servants, our county commissioners in this county of Passaic, that thy people may dwell in peace and safety through our Lord. Amen.
Is Terry on?
He's not on yet, so.
All right, Pat Lapore, you want to say the Pledge of Allegiance, please? And by the way, do not sit after the Pledge of Allegiance. We're going to have a moment of silence to remember all the men and women who have died while serving the United States Armed Forces, and all who have died from COVID-19, especially the over one thousand nine hundred and seventy-five residents of Passaic County, and one of them being Alan Zickman, who has been working for the, was working for the county almost thirty-five years. He passed away on January fourth from COVID, so we want to remember him in his service to the county. Pledge of Allegiance, Pat, please.
Yes, Director. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no proclamations to approve. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of December twenty-eighth and January sixth, two thousand twenty-two? I'm going to separate them. Can I have December twenty-eighth first, please?
I'll move it.
That was moved by Pat Lapore. I didn't see who seconded. John. Roll.
County Commissioners. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Gallo.
No.
Lapore.
Yes.
Lazara.
Yes.
James.
Yes. Okay, can I have approval, a motion to approve the minutes of January sixth?
I'll move it.
Second.
Roll call.
County Commissioners. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Duffy. Good, I'm sorry. Let me start over again. Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes, I'm going to turn this over to our administrator for our administrator's report. Tony, it's all yours.
Thank you, Director. Good evening, everybody. It's become our tradition. We have with us Dr. Gungil, our health director, to give us an update on our COVID-19 response throughout Passaic County. So I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Gungil.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'm hoping that this is the last January I'll be giving you a COVID update. Cross. Next slide, Michael. All right, so this is day six hundred and eighty-five since we've been doing this. In Passaic County now, we have over one, we have had over a hundred and twenty COVID cases. But here is the sad part. Since December fourteenth to now, forty-five thousand one hundred and five cases were added to the list. So one-third of our cases occurred over the last six weeks. Ninety-nine different Omicron variants have been identified in Passaic County, and only about three percent of our cases were Delta. Next slide, please. All right, so I asked the epidemiologist to look at data from the top leading causes of death before COVID. And so on your left, you can see the latest data we have is twenty seventeen to twenty nineteen, and you could see for those three years that people died from, you know, heart, you see heart disease, cancer, stroke, and you also see one that says all other major causes of disease. And this is for three years, and this is how they rack up. The center graph shows that in twenty twenty, we lost one thousand five hundred and fourteen people in Passaic County from COVID alone. Twenty twenty-one, thankfully, four hundred and forty-four. This slide shows you what vaccinations have done in Passaic County. Right? Just getting the vaccine, and you could see we were able to crush that curve. We were able to decrease the number of people that died from COVID. But I wanted you to see it in comparison to what people were dying from, diseases that we have grown used to as things killing people. COVID is right up there as well. Next slide, please. This is a little further analysis of COVID over the last couple of weeks from December fourteenth to now. This is how many people died within that six-week period. These deaths are all preventable. That's the heartbreaking part. Next slide, please. All right, this, these are comparison slides. The slide on the left shows you COVID cases for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. They see how many cases and what months they are. But I want you to see in the center, December of twenty twenty-one, fifteen thousand and twenty-three cases were identified in Passaic County. And that's the one, thank you, in December of last year alone. You know, it's, it, I don't even know what to say. On your right, that is a comparison between all of January first, twenty twenty-one to January twenty-fifth, and compared to this year, January first to January twenty-fifth. And you could see the blue, the blue represents twenty twenty-two cases. The orange represents twenty twenty-one cases for the exact same time period, two years in a row. So you could see how our cases have exploded over the last few weeks. Next slide, please. All right, so we've had Commissioner James since Friday. Between Friday and now, we've added more people to the death numbers. So now we're nineteen ninety-one Passaic County residents have died of COVID-19. We have also added children. We now have twenty-one children with a multi-system inflammatory syndrome. And it's just, you know, it's just heartbreaking. Next slide, please. All right, these are the Epi curves. The one on the left is for the entire pandemic. You can see it's almost, you know, this past fall, November to December, has eclipsed that first the first wave of COVID-19. And the graph to the right shows that last, from November twenty-fifth to today, and you could see how the cases increased over the last couple of months, two months. Next slide, please. On the left, it shows you the graph of the entire pandemic. This is the percent positivity. And then on the right, you see the last couple of months of last year into now. So you can see the positivity has increased again. Thankfully, that's going down, but yeah, we had a really tough time at the end of last year. Next slide, please. This is a breakdown by municipality, and this shows that it tracks, you know, with the population in those municipalities. So one-third of our cases, just over one-third of our cases, were in the city of Patterson, followed by the city of Clifton, and then Passaic City, and then Wayne. So this, you can actually look at the population and see that it's, it basically goes to the population. But always remember, though, that in Wayne Township, they have a disproportionate amount of long-term care facilities, and residents there have been disproportionately affected by COVID-19. Next slide, please. So this, this slide speaks to the work that we've been doing in your name as Passaic County. On the left, it shows that we vaccinated over sixty-six thousand, we've administered over sixty-six thousand doses of vaccines. Just under a thousand of them were to residents that are homebound. Yes, we do homebound visits, and about one-third of the doses administered were boosters. So, you know, we're trying to get in there to get people that third or booster shot. The center's pie chart shows that we mainly are doing Moderna, but you knew that because that's what we started with. And the very bottom shows that the forty-five to sixty-four-year group is the one that has, that has received most vaccines. But also, I believe, population-wise, I believe that's the largest population group in Passaic County as well. Next slide, please. This slide shows vaccines by race, and you could see just under sixty-two percent of those receiving vaccines from our clinics are self-identify as white, seventeen percent self-identify as other race. And to the right, you see the breakdown by ethnicity. Twenty percent self-identifying as Hispanic, fifty-nine non-Hispanic, and twenty-one either unknown or prefer not to identify. Next slide, please. All right, so this is another view of the vaccinations. You can see earlier on, people were getting vaccinated. You see it tapered off last year, and then a little bit of a rise in the fall between Thanksgiving and now. Next slide, please. The, the demand for doses, again, another slide showing you what that looks like. Next slide, please. All right, so boosters. So one of the places that we're told that we need to really work hard on is to have more Passaic County residents boosted. And this slide shows you the reason why. You can see there that thirty-eight percent of people who have received the primary and secondary doses, only thirty-eight percent have received boosters. So we really are working to try to change the trajectory. You can see in other counties, the numbers are greater, the percentages are greater. We have vaccinated a lot of individuals, but the percentage of our population is low. So we're working very hard to change that. We want to get to the top of the pile. Next slide, please. This is a further breakdown by age group. One of the places that we're lacking is with the five to eleven-year-olds. So the left shows that about twelve percent of the youngsters, five to eleven, have been vaccinated, but another nine percent have begun the process. So that's good. And so it shows a breakdown for the other age group, twelve-plus, and then eighteen-plus. So we're, we're getting there, but, you know, it takes time, it takes energy and effort, and we have to get people out to get it. Next slide, please. This is a kind of a busy slide, but it really shows the, who is getting vaccinated in what municipality. And, you know, we have some good numbers of vaccinations in every municipality. You know, Woodland Park, ninety-seven percent of adults have been vaccinated. Completing, or eighty-five percent have at least one dose. Ninety-seven percent of the population have completed the first two doses. So, you know, every, in every municipality in Passaic County, I think, except Little Falls, Little Falls, again, we know the reasons why. We have achieved and exceeded the seventy-five, and in some cases, you know, eighty-five percent have received the complete doses. And everybody has great numbers for receiving the first dose. So Passaic County as a whole, we've, we've done well, but because we have done so well in the first and second doses, then you see that gap for the third or the booster dose, and that's where we have to put our efforts. Next slide, please. And these are some updates, and I'll make these slides available regarding boosters. I think one of the important things is that Governor Murphy signed Executive Order two eighty-three requiring workers at health care facilities in higher-risk, congregate settings to have their vaccine and to receive a booster shot. That's, that's been very important to us. Another important thing that's happening is we're partnering with the State Department of Health with a vendor called Doc Go, and they're actually coming to our health department, and they're doing vaccines two days a week. They're also going in the community wherever we ask them to go and are doing pop-up vaccination clinics. We also opened our Megasite, which is a partnership with the State Department of Health, with state police, with St. Joe's, with Wayne, Wayne Township, ourselves. Am I forgetting someone? Anyway, it opened on Saturday for a dry run, and we vaccinated over seventy individuals. It's going to be open every Tuesday and Thursday from twelve to eight PM, and Saturdays from eight to four. And then we're working for the month of February, that the days in between, we'll make sure that we have vaccinations here at the health department. Next slide, please. All right, so this is information about who needs to be quarantined and for how long, because it gets very confusing. So I asked him to put it together in a way that's easy to read. Again, we'll have this for, maybe Neela could put on a website, and people could refer to it as needed. Next slide, please. So this talks about some clinics that we're having. I mentioned a couple. Today, we're also partnering with KUMAC, and we have Doc Go at KUMAC today from nine to six. The homebound continues. Yesterday, we were Boys and Girls Club in Woodland Park. We're, we're at West Milford High School, William Patterson University. Actually, with William Patterson, this partnership is, every other week, we'll be vaccinating there on campus, and so on. So we're working with schools, we're working with any partners to get the word out, to get the vaccines, to take it where the people are. Next slide. This is overall, again, who needs it, what it looks like, and I'll have it available for people to refer to. Thank you.
Director, if any commissioners have any questions for Dr. Gungil, that would be the time.
Dr. Palapore, with the explosion of at-home testing going on right now, and everyone getting them from the federal government, how do we, how do we account that?
That's a great question, Commissioner. Those, unless they are reported to their health departments, those tests are unreported.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Director, you're a director. I have a question. Duffy here. Doctor, we have any movement to start testing up at Camp Hope in the near future?
We have not discussed that, but it's something that I'm open to do.
Be great. Thank you. Anyone else?
I'd just like to say to Dr. Gungil, great job on the opening of the Megasite on Saturday. I think it's going to be a home run, and people should go up there to take advantage. If they had, if they haven't been vaccinated, go get vaccinated. If you haven't been boosted, go get boosted. I know on the alternate days up there, we're running a testing site also, correct? Those, what, that's Monday, Wednesday, and Friday?
Actually, that changed, Commissioner. They will be open Mondays through Thursdays. So they'll be open simultaneously because they, the state agreed that it is separate from, from the vaccinations. So they're open Monday through Thursday from twelve to seven testing. And then, as you know, as you mentioned, the clinic. I forgot to mention the, the National Guard is also a partner in the other Megasite.
Okay, and.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead, Sandy. I thought you were done.
The testing site is, it's coordinated by the county in unison with the township of Wayne, if I'm correct?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
Now, is that for just Wayne and New Jersey, or is that for anything in North Jersey?
It's New Jersey.
Anywhere.
It is, well, it is sponsored by the state of New Jersey. That's, that's what they're doing throughout the whole state. But we have not, we don't turn people away. This is a pandemic, and so you come, you have an arm, you want a vaccine, you want to be tested. We're just doing it. It's really.
Okay, that's what I thought. That's, that's good news, actually. So, okay, thanks. Anybody else? Or we're going to let Charlene go? I know it's been a long day for you.
Thank you.
We do appreciate the reports. We really do, Charlene, so thank you so much.
That's, that's all that I have on my administrator's report, Director. Thank you.
Thanks. All right, so county commissioners' reports. I'm going to pass on giving the time to my colleague Sandy. You're up for any commissioner report you want to give.
Oh, sure. I, I just, I wanted to talk a little bit. I know that, I hope everyone's heard that the county of Passaic is in the midst of installing a smaller version of the Vietnam Wall up in Wayne. And we've had a little setback because of COVID. So we're voting tonight on, we're voting on a bond ordinance, and that bond ordinance is going to include the funding, not only for the wall, but for the site preparation. And I guess it's, I'm mentioning this because I don't want people to think that this is just something we talked about. This is not only something we talked about, but we are bonding for, and I do believe that the work will start this year on getting the Vietnam Wall up to our site in Wayne. So I'm just really happy that we're following through on this, and I know all my colleagues are also. And it's been a long road, but don't give up the faith. It's going to start this year, and it's something that I want to bring to the attention of the public because I know it's so, so very important to our veterans and their families, and to all of us that, that we honor our veterans in this way. So I just wanted to give an update on the wall.
Yeah, I appreciate it, Commissioner, and having come from that generation and losing two friends whose names are on that wall, I can't wait till it's up. It's going to be a real bonus. You know, people now have to either try to track down a traveling wall, or they have to go to DC. This is going to be a permanent structure, and I think you're going to see this really be a big boost to tourism because people want to see this, and now it's going to be available all year long in our site up at the Fire Academy. So I, I, thanks for everybody who put the time and effort, Anthony, everybody, into, into getting this done. It's going to be a real home run for us. John Bartlett, you're up. You're muted. Either that or you're, nothing's coming out of your throat.
No, that'll never happen. Thank you very much, Director. I don't have much to add today. If you're a municipal official, a mayor, a council member, a business administrator, you got an email from me last week with information about funding and technical support available from NJTPA for certain types of complete streets and other infrastructure improvements. We encourage folks to contact our planning department, put together a strong application. Those applications are due Feb. eleven. This is just one of a whole lot of different opportunities that the county and our municipalities have to compete for federal funding for infrastructure improvements, and we should be taking every opportunity that we have to do that. I also wanted to mention one thing on the consent agenda, and if I'm getting ahead of you, Anthony, or anybody, I apologize. But item number eleven on the consent agenda is the reappointment of our county councilman, Matthew Jordan. As the lawyer on the board, I appreciate the challenge of the work of counseling a body like this one. And we have the good fortune of having a county council who's also a former deputy county administrator, so gets the work as it needs to be done, gets the law as it affects that work. And we are tremendously fortunate to have Matt on the team and to be giving him an additional three years on the team as part of our consent agenda book this year. So that's all I have. Thank you.
PJ, Best, sir, you're up.
Happy New Year again, everybody. Happy belated MLK Day and no report.
Happy New Year to you too, there, son.
I came here just to see you, Bruce.
Commissioner Duffy, you are up, sir.
Thank you so much. I want to also congratulate Matt Jordan. He's done a fantastic job. Go-to guy, never, never, always have a moment for you. Sandy, I too am very excited about the walk coming up. I know it's been a joint effort for, for all of us, and it's going to be a great day. It's something I, my grandchildren will be able to go up there and, and see the history firsthand. I'm very, very excited. It's, I'm also pleased and honored to be with a group of commissioners, freeholders, whatever you want to call us, cheese eaters, whatever we are, to be a part of this team. Thank you.
And Commissioner Gallo, for your first report.
Actually, I have nothing to report at this time. Thank you. It's good to see everyone.
A whole bunch of us didn't have anything, so you're a good company.
Thank you.
And Pat Lapore, you are up, sir.
I thank you, Director. We have two early resolutions under the heading of L. They'll need a two-thirds vote. One has to do with the authorizing the temporary capital appropriations for the Capitol year twenty twenty-two, and the second one is a resolution authorizing appropriations between the period of January one, twenty twenty-two, and the adoption of the county, state county budget for, for an emergency temporary grant budget pursuant to NJ forty-eight dash forty twenty. Also, on the consent agenda, there are twelve resolutions under the Administration of Finance for your, my colleagues' review, and I asked for their support on all twelve. And that's all I have, Director.
Okay, so that finishes that. We have no communications. Can I have a motion to open the oral portion of the meeting, public portion of the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Lapore, who seconded?
Second. Bartlett.
All right, roll call, please.
County, county commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy. Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara. Director, Director James.
Yes. Mike, is there anybody waiting to make comment? Has anybody, Lou emailed in, and do we have anybody who is currently raising a hand or online trying to make a comment? Anyone?
There, there is no emails, Director.
And Mike, anybody waiting to speak? Mike, you're muted, so if you're saying yes, I can't hear you.
I apologize, sir. There are presently no comments in the chat, the Q and A, and there are no hands raised.
All right, can I have a motion to close the public portion, then, please?
I'll move it.
Sandy, who's second?
I'll second.
Okay. Roll.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore.
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara.
Yes.
Director James.
Yes. All right, can I have a motion on L one, which is authorizing, which is authorizing the temporary capital appropriations for the calendar year twenty twenty-two? Who made the motion? Pat Lapore, is there a second?
Second.
Sandy Lazara, Sandy Lazara. Any, any discussion from the commissioners? Hearing none, please call.
County Commissioners Bartlett.
Yes.
Best.
Yes.
Duffy.
Yes.
Gallo.
Yes.
Lapore. Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. And can I have a uh, motion on two, resolution authorizing appropriations between the period of January 1, 2022 to the adoption of the county of Passaic budget for an emergency temporary grant budget pursuant to NJSA 40A colon 4-20 as noted in the resolution. This is why I didn't become a lawyer. But can I have a motion on that, please? I think that was Pat Lepore, is there a second? Second, Sandy Lazara. Any, any questions or comments from any commissioner? Hearing none, please, Paul Lou.
County Commissioners, Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. All right, we're gonna move on to the consent agenda. Matt, do you have any uh, late starters for today?
Yes, Director, I have three late starters and two minor amendments. Um, the first late starter, M45, a resolution authorizing an order contract to DCRS LLC for the construction of the Office of Emergency Management Storage Building in the Township of Wayne per bid C-021-021 pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-1@SEC. M46, resolution authorizing the purchasing agent to advertise and receive bids for the Encore Bridge and Culvert repairs for the period of February 1, 2022 to December 31, 2023 pursuant to NJSA 40A:11-1@SEC. And M47, resolution reappointing Tia Philo Javier to Passaic County Utilities Authority for a term prescribed under the law pursuant to NJSA 40:14B-4@SEC. Um, two other minor amendments, uh, resolution M3, um, the Fifth Amendment to the Master Deed for 930 North River View Industrial Condominium Association, which the county is a member. Um, we, I received the uh, this morning, a, a minor amendment circulated the agreement, doesn't affect the material terms, I just need to flop that into, attach it to the resolution. And resolution M26 has a typo in the title, completely spelled incorrectly, so I just want to note for the record to fix that spelling. There's no need for an executive session and my daily reminder, if any commissioners would like a resolution removed from the consent agenda, removed from the consent agenda, just make that motion through to Director. And thank you all for the kind words. As I said when I was appointed, it's been the honor of a lifetime for a kid that grew up in Passaic County to have this job, so thank you all.
Matt, my question to you, is it's just removed?
Um, we, we just need to take out, are we talking about the Fifth Amendment?
Well, you're saying actually remove a, a uh, any kind of a resolution here on the consent agenda. I don't think that's what you meant to say, because I'm not removing anything, but.
Need to amend it to include the updated Fifth Amendment to the Master Deed.
No, if somebody's gonna vote no on any of our consent agenda, do you not want it to be uh, a separate vote?
Oh, no, I'm saying if, if they want something removed for a separate vote to make that motion.
Well, you didn't say that, you said removed, then there's quite a bit of a difference between a separate vote and a removed. All right, so if anybody has something that they uh, do not want to vote on, then um, you know, we will vote on it separately. So if you have that as an issue, please tell us now and we will uh, vote on that, one or two items or whatever it is separately. Anyone? Okay.
Commissioner Gallo?
Oh, Commissioner Gallo, what's up? You're, you're up.
Yes, sorry about that.
It's okay.
Did you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Uh, I would like to note, vote on M11.
Do you want to vote separately on M11 and not make it part of the uh, consent agenda, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Please note that, Lou, when you uh, read what we're voting on?
Correct.
All right, so 11 will be voted on separately. And, and having said that, can I have a motion to add the late starters and amend uh, the two resolutions as stated by county council?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor of uh, adding the three and redoing the other two? Uh, you want to take all on that?
Uh, county, county commissioners, Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. All right, can I have a resolution on the consent agenda, uh, 1 through 10 and 12 through 15? Oops, not 15, 12 through... What's the last resolution, Lou?
47, Director.
All right, so L1 through L47, not including uh, M11.
M11.
So can I have a motion on that, please?
Moved.
Second.
Bill Bartlett, seconded by, by Lepore, I mean uh, Commissioner Lepore. Uh, any comments from anybody? Roll, please, uh, Louis.
County Commissioners, Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. All right, can I have a motion on M11?
I'll move it.
Duffy, second.
All right, seconded by Duffy, ruled by uh, uh, Sandy. Uh, on M11, roll, please.
County Commissioners, Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes. No, I'm sorry.
It's all right.
That's fine. Uh, Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. All right, so uh, we have new business. Uh, we see the filed supplemental debt statement from CFO and we have one bond, we have two bond ordinances, how many bond ordinances?
Three bond ordinances.
Three bond ordinances, so go ahead, Lou, it's hard to read.
Okay. Bond ord, uh, bond ordinance, uh, 2022-01, bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of new additional or replacement equipment and machinery, new additional furnishing and new automotive, motive vehicles, including original apparatus and equipment in, by and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $14,550,000 to pay for the cost thereof, to make a down payment or fully fund appropriations from the Capital Improvement Fund, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriations and to provide for, for the issuance of bonds, anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve bond ordinance 2022-01 on first reading?
I'll move it.
By Commissioner Lepore?
Duffy, second.
And Duffy, second.
Director, if I may, just as a, a, a point of order, a matter of record, I just want to say of the $14,550,000 that you'll be voting on right now, uh, only 10 million of that will be borrowed, the other four and a half million uh, will actually be paid uh, out of cash. So it's a, you know, one of the benefits of the position that the county is in financially these days, that we have the ability to not have to borrow um, all of the money to do the projects that, that uh, are included in this bond ordinance, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Tom. Any other questions or comments on this? Hearing none, Lou? Roll, please.
County Commissioners, Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy? Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. Lou, bond ordinance 2022-02.
Ordinance to authorize the undertaking of various public improvements for the Passaic County Community College in, by and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $4,971,000 to pay the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for such, provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Thank you, can I have a motion to approve bond ordinance 2022-02 on first reading?
Move it.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Lepore and seconded by Commissioner Deputy Lazara. Um, any, any questions, comments? Roll call, Lou.
County Commissioners, Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
No.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. Uh, okay, so uh, that was approved, can I have, Lou, read bond ordinance 2022-03?
Bond ordinance to authorize the making of various public improvements and the acquisition of a new additional or replacement equipment and machinery and new information technology and telecommunications equipment for Passaic County Community College in, by and for the county of Passaic, state of New Jersey, to appropriate the sum of $791,332 to pay for the cost thereof, to authorize the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation and to provide for the issuance of bond anticipation notes in anticipation of the issuance of such bonds.
Can I have a motion to approve the bond ordinance 2022-03 on first reading?
Move it.
Second.
Pat Lepore?
Yep.
Second? I didn't, I didn't hear who seconded it.
I believe it was Duffy.
All right, uh, named Duffy. Any comments? And poll the board, Lou?
County Commissioners, Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director James?
Yes. Uh, could I have a motion to approve the personnel agenda?
I'll move it.
Moved by Lepore, seconded by John Bartlett, all those, uh, I'm sorry, roll, poll, Lou.
County Commissioners, Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Director James?
Yes, uh, can I have a motion to pick on the bills list, please?
Move the bills?
Second.
It was, uh, Pat Lepore and John Bartlett, moved and seconded on, on the bills, uh, roll call, Lou.
County Commissioners, Bartlett?
Yes.
Best?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Lepore?